No, no. No, I don't think so.
I think so.
Question.
He had a minor circuit.
Yeah, I knew that, but yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, he was at her.
No, it's going on.
Mark, you might as well pull up here. If you bring my table up to the little circle.
I think they're.
Yeah, I think it's probably it's minor.
The score.
Whenever like that way, make sure that.
I think they're.
Yeah, I think it's probably it's minor.
Score.
Whenever like that way, make sure that.
My, my council meeting starts at seven.
That's good to know.
But if I get a call at.
Plus it takes you fifteen to get there.
If I get a call at eight-ten that's from the VFW, I'm gonna take it outside.
If it's work related.
That means you're not going back.
You're attending your council meeting like well, it says it's work related.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll enjoy that.
Same here, I'm out.
Yeah.
If I get to there, I was out of town, then you're in charge, you know.
Bring it on.
He gets a phone call, we can just add it to the fees camera.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
I like that.
Another retained personnel account, right?
Do a double date? You can do a slideshow of one last.
Good evening, everyone, I'd like to call the Tuesday, September four, special city council meeting to order. Clerk, please call it off.
And here.
Alderman.
Here.
Alderman Curran.
Here.
Alderman Schaper.
Here.
Alderman Glass.
Here.
Alderman Santi.
Here.
Mayor Jett.
Here. Please stand for the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'll open up for public comment. Barb, I know you're out there and she doesn't want to make a public comment at this time. But at this time, I'll go ahead and open it up for Meyer Lafarge to go ahead and give a presentation, just a brief presentation of how the operation. That way, all council and staff can be on the same page exactly how procedures will, will work.
Mandy Lu from Lafarge Meyer Material Company. I know that Mark Miller can't be here. He said if I need to try to reach him by phone, I could. In the meantime, I think he furnished a, I'll call it a red line narrative of some of the conditions list that has now been combined between term fee and consulting arrangements. And we can walk through that as well as there's a, I'll call it a series of photographs that would kind of show where we left off at the last meeting, which is kind of an overall view of where the mining would take place on the south parcel, ultimately conclude, and then continue on the north parcel and be transferred back to the processing area. If you want, I can try to walk through here a little bit. Maybe that helps everybody.
So are these photos you're holding, we don't have those, right?
They should have been sent today to Mayor Jett.
From Miller?
Yes.
That's okay.
This morning.
We don't have.
Well, there's a series of them, but I can walk through it a little bit.
I, I have.
Do you have it?
Yeah.
I think pictures are gonna be a big part of the ultimate amendment when we get there. I think the photos are gonna be important.
When we left here ten days ago, it was our understanding that we were gonna have eight years from May fourth of this year to conclude mining and restoration on the reserves that were available on the south side. I think one of the last things we talked about was the dry bank mining, which is where the field crusher would be, and we have to complete that by December thirty-first of 2024. And that we would have two more years to reclaim and complete whatever wet mining took place on the south side. But by December thirty-first, 2026, we would be completely reserve depleted on the south side. But the processing plant would still be there. And we were asked to put together like a storyboard as to what, like call it the next eight years and then beyond would look like. So the first slide is, is twenty-twenty.
Do you want to make copies?
We haven't done it right.
I apologize. I'll, I'll do my best to kind of hold this up and contrast and compare a little bit. But you can see where the processing center is here, which straddles C and D. All of our mining is really taking place dry bank along Glacier Ridge Homes, and there's additional reserves slightly up and around the wooded area. This ten acre woods was donated to the homeowners association back in nineteen eighty-eight.
Hey, Randy?
Yes.
Just a real quick question. Can you point where the southernmost, basically would be the secondary crushers, where they're located? Cause they're gonna stay where they're at, right?
Okay, the, the primary crusher, which is the one in the field. That, that's the one, yeah.
No, I'm talking about the secondary.
Oh.
Cause that's one's gonna stay after.
Well, it's gonna stay after to a certain point. And, and so, so right now, the primary crusher moves around as we convey raw materials back to the plant area. And what happens is about twenty-five to thirty percent of the material goes into a crushing plant. So we can make chips and binder for, for asphalt mixes. So there is a crushing plant here that takes twenty-five to thirty percent of the material. The remainder bypasses, goes up to this main feed, and that's where the wash plant is. So all of those materials are, are sorted. There might be a tertiary crusher up there, depending on the type of product they're making. But ultimately, all of these products up here are washed. They go through a wet wash system, and that's where the discharge waters and clean out comes from.
And that's where the trucks are loaded.
Trucks are all loaded up in here, and then these smaller piles down here. And then there's a recycle plant right there that recycles concrete, about ten thousand tons a year. Okay? So that's the master footprint, which doesn't change very often because obviously it's very expensive to relocate. They'll change feeds depending on the deposit, and then they'll change screens, but we don't change crushers a lot. The field crusher is gonna be out here as long as we have good size material that we need to get on the belt. So over the five years that we're talking about, the 2024 date, we would propose to have the field crusher moving in this area where we still have dry bank material.
Is that shown somewhere? So I don't remember that.
Well.
Or is that gonna be shown in the document?
I guess when we sent these pictures out, we called out the dry bank in orange. And that would be material that is above the water table that would need primary crushing in the field.
The point is that the primary crusher is within the brown area there.
It would be.
For five years.
It would be.
Not more than five years.
Not more than five years. It would be, we'd be done twelve-thirty-one of twenty-four.
I know, but the crusher's located in that area the whole time.
The field crusher would be located here. It's going to move around because we're ultimately, depending on how we.
But it's in there.
Get it mined, it is in there. And it'll end up probably finishing up, up here last. And if you see these series of depictions, this is a 2020, and then you'll see by 2022, we've shrunk the dry bank up into the farther north end of the project. So that means the primary crusher's already gonna be up here. And then by 2024, all that material dry bank has to be out. This is the 2024 plan, so you'll see where the lake. I always focus on this ten acres because it's pretty pronounced on, on plans. But you'll see that all the dry banks, so there's no more orange by the end of the 2024 period.
Right, so wait, with this first photo, what is the.
Okay, not more. They should be a twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-four are gonna get you through the dry bank material. So we start out in 2020 with still a good chunk of farmland that still has coarse aggregate that required. Can you see down in the, in the title block in the bottom right corner?
Does this depict to the end of 2020?
Oh, yeah, that's, it's a concept plan. So what, what I say, the beginning of the year, that would be, is probably conservative as we could be. Could it be the Fourth of July of every year?
I know, but what's the intent of the photo? It's to show you.
It's to show the progression of where we're gonna go from two-year increment to two-year increment. So by the time 2026 rolls around, that you, you get to the fourth slide. The 2027 concept plan shows all mining completed. And, and again, an estimate of where we think the materials could be below water. So it would go all the way up along the west side of the woods, but all restoration is in green slopes. And then obviously, there's gonna be some flat lands that we know don't have minerals below water. So it's kind of a greenish-yellow, and that's, that's gonna be more of a pasture field down, down at the water's edge. Now, again, these are estimates based on the borings we have. But it's up to us to get the dry bank out by 2024, get the primary crusher out of, call it the south parcels. And then continue mining whatever wet mining we can make and finish up the slope areas in here by the deadline. Does that make sense? So these photos are kind of a representation of the direction we would go in order to get it done. Cause in order to build these slopes here and here, we gotta keep stripping the dirt from here. And we'll, we'll basically come up this way and then head up this way. And then if you follow the processing, there's a red dotted line in an orange stockpile. It's an estimate that we're, because we're gonna mine it probably a little bit faster than we should, we're gonna end up with extra product because you're not gonna sell everything you're pulling out of the ground in every season. So we're estimating there's an orange stockpile that would actually use it as a barrier.
That's in our 2024?
Uh, 2024, 2027 plans. We figure we're probably still gonna have a little bit of extra pea gravel. And we could probably stockpile it in a way that actually serves as a buffer. Because if, if there is any noise issues that are straight south, and, and again, we're gonna be pulling all of our operations then up to basically about this line. And if we can stockpile material down here, that serves as an additional buffer. Otherwise, we had talked about when we left last time that if permission is granted to allow these berms right along the property line to stay in place, we, we can reclaim all the slopes and get it released from the state except for the berms that were initially put down. If that's something that is good for the neighbors' relations, and then allow us to bring those down when we're completely done, we can leave those up. So that was another discussion. Then to look past, you, you go, the, the 2027 already shows you on the north side of Route 120 where we have reserves in this area. We've obviously mined out some of it, but in the 2024 plan, it shows, or 2027, it shows us removing this portion of the reserve. And then by 2030, pretty good chunk, so we would be moving in this fashion. And I think you can see it, if you have it in front of you, there's a dotted black line that shows where the conveyor belt would run underneath Route 120. Can you see it? If you have them in front of you, there's a.
Yeah.
Thin black line. The tunnel is already there. You can kind of see it in this area where the original feed came through. But we would propose running it right back down to the south end of the plant site and back up. That makes sense. It might even be indicated on the, on prior to it by a data. So the tunnel is already in place. There are conveyor sections that are already here. They did remove some of this to move it in a different area, but the same path, there's still sections of it over here. They would probably just reconnect it in order to, to get the remainder. Although we're not talking about those reserves under this application.
Okay, somebody just gave us another version of this. Is this different?
Well, that would be Mark's.
Mark's today.
Yeah, that was Mark's today.
I think he's in twelve.
I, I think what he really did was broke out the fees.
Yeah.
In a table. I think that was the biggest.
And added a few things.
Oh, come on. Did he add it? Did he? Is it same or different?
He's explaining, he's explaining.
He's explaining how we would pay three hundred thousand in the January payment, and then a breakdown of how the remainder of the payments would come through. Two hundred thousand in nineteen and twenty and so on.
Okay, well, the point of tonight is to find out if we have the city council with us to continue this discussion along the lines of what's in the outline, ours, or Mark's, or whatever. And we need to get, we need to get, see where we are.
I guess the one thing I just need to confirm, because this was all built around the last meeting, and that was the dry bank able to mine through the end of 2024, and then the wet and the restoration simultaneously through twelve-thirty-one of 2026. That's how these were.
So let's just jump.
Jump to term of agreement.
That's what anybody else wants to do something.
Randy?
Yes.
The, the, the final, the water feature, I guess you call it, at the end is significantly different from where it was in some of that earlier stuff. Is that because you did borings and found out that you've got, and then if I remember right, you were, the talk was it would take a year to do that on, now you're in two years to do that on. Is that?
Well, actually, they're talking about trying to mine some of it even in addition. If you look at 2020, they're talking about, and again, it's mother nature. We go by what the borings give you. I, I think our geologist looked at it and said, well, on a best case basis for us, that lake could be bigger. That doesn't mean it's gonna be that big. It's a concept to say, this is how we're gonna mine the lake in the first couple of years. Obviously, the last few years, we're gonna take, it's gonna get a lot larger if the material's there. You know, if the material's not there, the lake won't nearly be as big, and maybe we're done in 2025.
Can you just follow up on that? I thought, my understanding was that when you were doing that, that you couldn't, you hadn't mixed it.
We.
But if you're done with the dry bank, how would you?
It's to our advantage to blend the finest materials while we're shipping course. That, 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 the plant is balanced. So they're gonna try to mine below water as long as, if, if the above water has a lot of coarse material in it, then we'll be able to probably blend a lot more below water fines in it. If, if the surface starts getting superfine.
You might restart the season earlier.
That's.
I mean, because if, because if you're done with dry bank in 2024, and you've got two years of wet.
Yeah.
You've got two years of fine stuff, probably.
And I think if, if you look at the 2024 and 2027, I should say 2027 and 2030 plant footprint, it's already showing that the red boundary line is probably gonna start shrinking because, and I brought this up at the last meeting, once the plant switches over to ninety percent fine, this crushing plant operation that we were talking about, the secondary crushers.
Right.
Probably ends up going either completely gone, or it's reduced just because we don't have nearly the coarse aggregate that's gonna come in it. So the plant footprint of the actual loading probably even goes a little bit further north after we're done on the south side. Because all we're gonna be doing is shipping ninety percent sand down to this plant. That all gets washed, so that all stays here. If you don't have any aggregates that are larger than, you know, three, four inch that are coming out of the water, they're not really gonna be enough to make any coarse products.
So at the point where the secondary crushers possibly wouldn't be needed, you would probably.
Phase out over.
You would then move your conveyors to convey it directly.
Then this, then this just comes to here and probably goes right to this surge pile. And then you'd end up.
This is not, not relevant to the agreement because everything he's saying is what they might do, they might not do.
I know, I know.
What dictates us, though, is the crusher.
No, I know, I'm just trying to understand.
We, we wanna know on an annual basis, that's the purpose of the annual report. So we need something in there that dictates the movement, the required movement of the crusher. And I don't know how to weave that into this, but that seems to me to be the pivotal point for us.
Well, the crusher's gonna move no matter which way you wanna rotate it. And, and again, I, as long as we can.
No, he's talking about the secondary.
Oh, the secondary, I'm sorry.
Yeah, he'd like that to move north.
No, I was just, I was trying to understand the operation. The big noise producer is the primary crusher. That'll be gone in 2024, right end of the year. That's the biggest issue in terms of noise. That's the, the real crunch noise.
Yeah.
If you've ever been to the gruff, if you really drop it in there, that's, that's when you hear.
Yeah.
The other is more of a consistent noise.
Well, exactly. I, I was gonna say, it, it, it's because of the erratic feed of the raw bank, where it'll be quiet for a little bit, and then you'll get a boom, 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 and then it'll go down, and then you'll get a boom, boom, boom. Whereas the manufacturing section is probably more of a standard feed going through it because the primary took all the ups and downs out of it. It took all the big ones and made them all more uniform, so.
So now that we're talking about the crushers, are we not requiring enclosures? Or are we requiring enclosures at any point along this? They don't have anything about it, of course. Now, that could be a, that could be a, an imposed penalty in the event there's a problem. Do we wait for the problem to come, or do we try and prevent the problem?
That was in our notes from the last meeting, was the enclosures.
Right, but we don't have a resolution of it.
Yeah, and I guess the question is, if our noise is within the regulations, we can do everything, we can do to make it less impactful, but it's not doing anything against the law. That's why I said, if we left the berms up along the perimeter, is that something that somebody would be interested in?
I, I think the berms, actually, I was, I wrote a note to myself on this that, cause I hadn't really thought, when you talk about reclamation's done, but part of reclamation is tearing the berms down.
Yes.
I don't think we want the berms on, along Burning Tree, Glacier Ridge, and Wood Creek down until the, the plant equipment is.
Okay.
Is gone. I mean, it just wouldn't make sense to tear down what little noise barrier it creates.
And just so you know, we, we still have berms up over on Ridge Road.
Right.
For that same reason, more of a security issue. Even though this has all been restored and that this is being farmed, the inspector has come in and released part of it because it's being used for agriculture. But the berms being up are still bonded and not released at all. So it would be the same program down here. Put it back to a.
But, but you see the difference, we're, we're talking about the exact same thing. We're not solving anymore of the problem. You're putting, you're leaving the berms in place, or you're installing the berms, even though there might not be a noise problem. You, you, if you remove the berms, odds are you're gonna have the same noise compliance before and then you do after.
It could be, just because sheer distance.
But, but to be conservative, you're leaving the berms. I get that, and that's good. So why wouldn't we, at the same time, discuss an enclosure for the noisiest thing? Which I don't know if, I guess, I don't even know if you can close the primary because of the nature of the thing. But it, I mean, why wouldn't we do the same thing, even though it's not required? And we're meeting the levels and all that. We know the crusher makes noise for people to hear. Just like we know current makes noise that people can hear.
People can hear.
They might be in compliance, but maybe a wall, they're talking about doing some sort of a fifteen-foot wall sound thing, which, you know, I guess sends it up, I don't know if it sends it down, I suppose.
I guess our solution down there would have to be portable because periodically, the crusher's gonna move back. Right now, I think it's all the way over here.
Didn't Doug talk about that one?
He did, in, in a meeting, he brought it up.
Offered that up, that he was gonna try a.
Yeah.
Somebody should experiment, either current, or you ought to put up a wall and say, you know, you talk to Tom Thunder, and the noise goes up, and then it goes over. It's just a matter, you've now saved these people noise-free. These over here, though, will hear it because.
Because it'll.
Yeah, it goes like that. I don't know if that's true, it's a noise guy, but. I don't, it doesn't sound like it's an expensive experiment.
I, I remember the same meeting, Scott, where he talked about it. Something about, maybe we could build something that.
I thought it was a great idea.
Like, you could run with the crusher.
It could go a long way for the people.
Yeah.
At least it should make the effort.
You know, always face it away and put the enclosure to the backside of the enclosure to.
Now, now, the difficulty, Kern was talking about putting it on the north side of their plant to save the noise going north to.
Correct.
Whatever that's called up there. But the problem with that is it diverts this way, south, and it goes, now you're diverting it back to the people on the south.
I think they wanna point it.
Yeah, west, yeah, if you could.
Put it east, so it, what, bounces west, so it.
Yeah, so, you know, Tom would have to be a part of that. But anyway, sorry, but that's enclosures, I don't know. Term of the agreement. So do we have consensus to do what's written in red here? Not in black and red?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted, because I noticed in Reddit it says state of all annoying noise standards. Are, are municipal noise standards comparable to the state standards?
Oh, no, they're totally in error. You, we're, we're in the process of adopting the state standards for the city.
Oh.
By reference.
Okay.
One line.
Okay.
And that'll be on your, one of your agendas coming up.
Okay, thank you.
And the other thing, just to note there, it's, I noticed that it says repeated violation.
Right.
Um, violation is a lot different than a complaint. So how are you going to determine?
Yeah, I don't know what he means by that, but.
It says violation multiple times, by the way.
Right.
On other things too, for noise and us.
Yeah, that would be an adjudicated violation, I think.
Well, I would assume the violation is gonna be proven to whatever the statute is, and not just a complaint. Right?
Well, um, we haven't written the penalty part of it, but no, you could have a noise complaint that has nothing to do with noise standards. It could be another noise ordinance violation that we're now doing with current. If there's a complaint filed, not having anything to do with decimals. It just has to do with you offending my senses.
So that would be determined, a complaint would then be termed a violation? Or, I just wanna make sure they're both the same thing.
That was in the detail. If you, if I get direction, then I, that's where I would go.
Okay.
We have to decide that. We have to decide when there's a violation and when there isn't. If we haven't, we're not down to that level yet.
Okay.
The intent of this mainly was to say, they're gonna buy this thing called a dos- dosimeter.
Dosimeter.
And I have to make sure Tom's okay with that. I talked to Bob Anderson about the dust track monitoring. That is the device he would use down below there. So if the dosimeter is acceptable, there's no allotment, anything like that, that would be part of the agreement. We would own it, they would buy it, we could test, give the parameters of where we would test. We just don't have what the consequences or what those standards are, we need to refine that. You know, they're, they're not gonna want a complaint because anybody can raise a complaint, so they're not gonna want, it's a violation to simply have a complaint. You know, we're not gonna want that, it's gotta be court adjudicated because that never happens.
Right, that's why I was gonna say, they'd probably need to.
Figure that out.
To find.
But I, his point of repeat is, you know, we, we wanna be, I guess, a second chance after the first one. So I don't know what is it.
Well, and I, I'm, I'm, I have an issue with that. We don't do that in the dust, they didn't put it in the dust, I don't know why they would put it in the, in the noise.
Yeah.
It's a, it's an actual violation.
Yeah, if it's found to be a violation.
If it's found to be a violation, it's a violation.
Well, we only put language in there that was in red. That would have been.
Right.
Original petitions in black, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so, I mean, Mark was suggesting that he doesn't have to pay the first expense of determining there's a violation, it's only after the second one. That doesn't flow very well.
Yeah. So. And he didn't do it, he didn't do it under the dust section, why would he do it under the noise section?
It would probably be an extra. So then, again, for down noise, I, I did talk to Anderson today. He's good with this language on the dust. Thing he wanted, he had was not only would it be a violation of the dust standards, and those are good dust standards, the PM.
Yeah, the National Ambient Noise.
Yeah.
Why are we not.
Dust standards.
Including PM two-point-five, which is the, which is a really harmful dust.
I don't even know if there's any devices that measure two-point-fives.
Well, sure, you get to do it on your, on your, your dust hygiene.
I, I don't think we're regulated on two-point-five.
Say that a little louder.
Should this discussion be in closed session?
Uh, you know, I don't care if any of this is enclosed.
Okay, I'm just.
Totally up to you guys. We were gonna go into close once we.
And once we do this.
Uh, you know, I don't care if any of this is enclosed, it's totally up to you guys, we were gonna go into closed once we finish the discussion.
And once we do that.
Yeah, about where we feel we are.
Okay, I don't care, I just.
No, no.
Thank you. But there are two.
Two oh five is a section number?
No, two point five.
There are two National Ambient Air Quality Standards for Dust, one is PM ten, which is considered, is if you will, just total dust or nuisance dust. And then there's a PM two point five, that's a micron level, that's the size of the dust.
Yeah.
The harmful dust is not PM ten, that's the air, that's an irritant, harmful dust is two point five.
Okay, so we have to find out.
That's, that's the asbestos thing, that's what it gets in your lungs, can't get out because it's so small.
Okay, so that's like the sun stuff.
And, and, well, our, our own workers, I don't even, I'd have to find out if they're tested for two point fives, because that would be like silica related stuff. And, and I know our people are safe, they work in it all day long.
We'll, we'll ask Anderson if the dust track device tests for this level of concern. He also agreed that he could teach the staff how to mechanically do the test, perform the test. And he could just, you know, analyze the results if and when needed, if they're, if those are the right words to use. So I'm assuming Tom Thunder could do the same thing up top on noise, though these paragraphs should pretty much track each other. So I'll check out the PM two point five, he also said.
So we're gonna assume the training cost?
Yeah, we're not.
The city's gonna assume the training cost.
The training cost, oh.
So thunder trains or, or, or power trains for dust, we're gonna assume that cost. It's unclear to me, that's why I wanted to, not talking about the later, we're talking about the training.
Initial training.
To get set up to test it.
I don't know, that wasn't discussed. So why don't we put that off till we get to retain personnel things? So he also wanted to add no visible dust standard. You wouldn't have a, in my opinion, no visible dust is similar to the noise complaint of, you know, you're bothering me.
Right.
A nuisance, so it's two standards still, I mean, proving that we know is more difficult because they're not objective, they're subjective, so.
Well, there is a, there is a standard for.
Visible.
Yeah, visible dust to, per our air permit.
Right.
At the property.
An air permit.
But how do you prove that, you take a picture of it or something?
No, you, sort of, there's a, there's a, there's a scale you use that shows opacity, it's an opacity scale. And you have a trained operator that looks at.
Yeah, but it's his work, because it moves.
Well, certainly it is.
Right, so it's, that's what I'm saying, it's subjective, so it's a noise, right? If ten people were standing there, but.
Noise is, is a little bit easier to measure.
Measure.
Because you can put it on a, on a scale.
I know, but this, measurement is A, the other violation is B, visible, and the other violation, noise, is B, it's too loud for me. You're offending me, you're offending the, you know, the normal person. Those two are difficult to prove because they're subjective, according to the person, whether it's a.
Yes.
Operator, the city manager, whatever. But anyway, he's, he's, he said it would be odd to include an objective dust standard and not have no visible emissions standard.
Well, ask him about an opacity standard, because it's sort of in between. Because an opacity standard, yes, there's a judgment involved of the person who's reading it, but it is a numerical scale.
Yes.
So you do come up with an answer, but it's still, it, it depends on the person making a judgment, looking, they do this on smoke stacks all the time.
Yes.
You look at a smoke stack and you say, it's not steam now, it's, you know, black smoke or whatever. They look at it and they go, well, they got the scale, they go, and they have to go through training and they have to go retrain our officers.
Every six months.
Six months, and they go, okay, this, it's thirty percent.
I shouldn't say that, they offer every six months, I think our mine managers all have it annually, but I think every six months they offer a training course, go, smoke.
Okay, so there is a training involved, and, you know, we can, we can send people to training everywhere, and it's not like it's, it's.
So now.
We choose to do that.
Somewhere in here, you had Baxter and Woodman's, yeah, that, the reclamation, so.
It's true, before you get there, you have to.
No, no, I just, I just let me cover the retain personnel thing before I forget. If you, if you go to the next paragraph, the only thing I want to talk about in the next paragraph on the reclamation, is he wanted Don Palmer's costs to be included in the allocation of funds to consulting engineers.
Correct.
Or consulting people.
I think that's what we had proposed, that we would furnish the plans.
Maybe, but, but from the beginning, all of my versions that no one ever objected to only included groundwater, dust and noise. Those three were set aside and then retain personnel would still be over and above that, would be me and Baxter and Woodman on reclamation. Because reclamation is an ongoing effort in, in the sense of it, even annually.
I, I've always had reclamation in the same.
I know, but that's not.
Four consultants.
It was never typed that way, and he's changing it without actually saying it, and it's, I want to know where we are.
I know we had an email from you once upon a time that had Tom Thunder, ten thousand dollars, Don Palmer, ten thousand dollars, H R Green, twenty nine thousand dollars and hydroengineering.
That was before, that was before we tried to flat feed things, once we flat feed it, I had to put in who's included in that category. Again, I sort of removed myself and Baxter Woodman from that, only because Baxter Woodman, I think, is different, but I just need an agreement, I don't care which way it goes, actually. Just need to know where we're going on retain personnel.
I know we've offered up to put the plans together in-house to save some money. Don can, Don can review them, Don can offer up opinions on restoration costs for purposes of bond and letter of credit calculation. That's where I thought we, Don's.
All right, well, is everybody good with including then the four consulting practices? Dust, noise, groundwater, H R Green and Baxter Woodman reclamation. You will never have any of their costs paid by Meyer unless it's a violation. And then, then we'll go right into training after that.
As long as it's not a repeat replacement, it's.
No, any, any violation.
An initial violation, any violation.
Any violation.
Right, just a correct information.
And the only one that got put in was noise and I struck it myself. But I do have a question on reclamation, because it appears that our part consultant, it was Palmer who. That Meyer supplies anything they want initially, and then he gets to approve revisions, but who gets to offer the revisions? Just Meyer or us?
When you say revisions, there's a plan in place that's already, State of Illinois has it in all their permits.
I understand.
I guess you guys are looking at the remainder of what needs to be restored.
Right, we were going to amend those plans, right? We're bringing those plans current, because everything we've looked at is old. We were gonna bring the plans current so that everybody is looking from this date forward, they're not looking back anymore to see where, you know, where all the screw ups were in the past.
I don't think there is any screw ups, I guess I'm saying, from, from what needs to be reclaimed going forward, in order for us to get out of there. We were gonna develop a two foot contoured engineered plan and Don would look it over, but it would have to meet the State of Illinois because we still have to put it with the State of Illinois.
I know, so that should render moot all the part of plans, true?
Uh, well, no, because there are still existing plans that are in place with old permits. That we've already, I mean, we've already restored several areas of the mine. I guess it was always, what are we gonna do with the remainder? So when we were talking about some of these, like these slopes here, this all has to be engineered to what the consultant would agree is appropriate.
So maybe it just stated as remaining.
No, reclamation plans need to be updated.
No, but the point of what he's saying is some of it has already been reclaimed.
It doesn't mean you can't update the plan.
Yeah, but going forward, we need to go to stages.
Well, we're gonna show existing conditions of, of what we've restored and then how we would tie that in with what we've.
Don wrote the specification of the existing conditions, the operating thing and then.
Operating plan and reclamation plan, yes.
Because in, in the current reclamation plan, if we don't update it, then, then I would insist that you re-enclose your wash plant and that you enclose all of your equipment, because it's written into our reclamation plan.
Yep.
It's in there now, so if you wanna, you wanna not have to do that, we need a new written plan, it's not just a contour map, it's a written. The whole plan has to be rewritten, and yes, you can identify the prior stuff that's already been completed, that's fine, but you have to do.
So how long did I tell you?
Boy, don't hold me to it, I'd have to get our mine planning people, I, we did the topo, because when you and I were talking in May, the topo was done. So that's the good news, is we have an existing conditions plan, pretty much ready to go. It's a matter of going to and extrapolating the contours out, if I said.
Two months?
I, I mean, I don't, I gotta make phone calls and find out when.
Well, I, I think that delays this, right, we're gonna be talking about a tolling agreement here that goes out to, you know.
But what happens if it was a deliverable?
Yeah, I mean, if you tell us we have to get it and he gives us a date, we gotta get it.
Like we would get the plans to him for review by X.
Well, it can't be soon enough because we're, I mean, I'm making these changes like, you know, this week to the agreement.
So we, we couldn't come to an agreement on everything and then have a deliverable date after that?
Yeah, that assumes it's an acceptable deliverable. Right, what if, what if he hand us something that he says, no, this isn't gonna work?
Well, then.
That's a fundamental problem.
We're gonna have to make a plan that's deliverable then.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, sooner would be better.
And that, and that's where I was asking the question, because I think originally we had that had to be approved by Don Palmer. I realize we're not the regulating authority, that doesn't really matter, we can still have our consultant approve that plan and it can be written into the agreement that way, because just like the current plan, there are things in the current plan that are not required by the state, a lot, you must enclose your wash plant, that's in the current plan. So there are things in plans that don't necessarily involve the State of Illinois.
That's why we're gonna look at it.
That's why our guy needs to, well, if they struck the, you know.
The approval.
The approval.
Right.
Well, no, but your, your, your language is still in there, that Don has that authority to review the plant supplied and approve revisions. So he would have the right to make those suggestions, I think that's in there, I think that's a part of it.
Yeah, well, right, but what was, that's the way he took out here, in addition, Don will have the authority to approve all. So, all the reclamation.
So if we're looking at this as a revision of the nineteen eighty seven plan, then that language covers it. Then Don will approve any revisions to bring it up to date.
As long as, yeah.
And when you want to use the term approve, I don't care what you call it, agree to, whatever you call it, you know, mutual agreement.
But see, I, I want that agreed before we sign this thing, it should be moved by the time we sign it. Once we sign it, I want all these envisioned, the plans being attached, so we don't have to go back into the pile of plans. Nobody wants to do that, it's horrible, he's the only one that gets it.
No, but we're, it's not gonna happen, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's not gonna happen.
You just don't have the answer with me, I'd have to start.
Well, I don't think they're gonna have it.
Right, right, but we, this isn't the first time we talked about this, maybe.
Are they deliverable in, you know, ninety days from today or whatever the deal is? I mean, it's not like we're mining super fast, that's really gonna change in ninety days.
David, if you stated as that it will be provided by X state, whatever, and if it's not.
Then what?
Doesn't meet our approval, the, the agreement is null and void, can you do that?
You can, but that's a mess, I mean.
Okay, I just listened.
I'd rather, I'd rather.
Well, I, I think you can, just, just what was said, I think you can.
I don't even know what we're looking for until Don looks at it and says, here's what you need to look for.
Correct, which is why I don't think it's gonna get done when we need it. But I think that you can put it down as a deliverable, agreed to by, on such and such a date. Draft shall be provided by such and such a date, so we get a look at it before we get to the drop dead date. So.
What happens if that?
Now you gotta hit penalty for that too?
Yeah.
They're not gonna like that.
Null and void, I'm assuming you're drop dead. What would your drop dead be?
I, I was saying sixty to ninety days without talking to our engineering people, just to say, hey, they got the topo, that much I know. I just don't know how quickly they can put stuff together and get the done.
But you'd have to review it as well.
Correct.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, that's another two weeks.
Are they really gonna take more than sixty days?
It's got hype.
The engineers are gonna take the original plan.
I'm, I'm here trying.
We should have been doing this all summer, it's August.
I know, well, we're past, we're past that, so, you know, engineers, if they get on it, they should be able to, we gotta push them to be on it. Sixty days ought to be, they already got the topo done, right?
The topo's done, that's, that's the good news, is the flyover part's done, somebody's got to.
The rest of it shouldn't be that.
You won't let Don Palmer do it because he doesn't know what you intend.
No, I, I just, it would be, to me, I thought it would be easy for our mine planning people to put it together.
Ninety days together, it's not easy, that sounds like it's a chore.
Well, it's because there are just not too many mine planners across the country, I gotta find out who's gonna be doing it.
Okay, so that's.
It's, you know, it, it, it just, it's the reclamation plan, it's not that the world ends if we don't have it on the day. So make it easy, they get sixty days to provide a draft, we get thirty days to do a first review, there's back and forth, hundred and twenty days has gotta be done. I mean, it's not a drop dead, this is not a, yeah, I mean, it's a reclamation plan that's thirty years old at this point, so. You know, if you give it a four months, five months to get it done, it's not a. It's just, I, I do agree, there has to be a drop dead date, because otherwise, things, things slide, otherwise, so.
And I agree.
Okay, we'll just get ready for a monetary penalty.
Okay.
There'll be a generous date, you, you can pick the date, as long as there's a penalty. Can we back up to groundwater, since we jumped over there? This, again, this is emphasizing the fact that the fees that are incurred, not just H R Green, but whatever. Construction costs we have down at the other facility at Meyer, or One Twenty and.
Current.
Current Road, whatever costs it is in that groundwater, stormwater situation we're building, they're not gonna contribute to it, this is it. So the point of this paragraph is, they're done talking about groundwater and stormwater.
My groundwater.
Yeah, I combined them, so what, what's the issue with groundwater?
Well, the issue with groundwater.
Oh, the test, the well testing.
We have well testing that we talked about before, to upgrade it, to downplay the wells, they can be private wells, but.
Okay.
They're need to be testing groundwater testing on a regular basis, I don't know what that number is.
Right, so the second sentence.
Whatever that is, but.
It's quarterly.
It's quarterly on the north side.
Yeah, that's where we follow the county's earth extraction.
So it should be quarterly on the south side, but you gotta, we have not identified, or, again, they can identify the wells. Any qualified water, groundwater person is gonna be able to identify groundwater wells that comply with the requirements of the state guidelines for what wells to use, I mean, I, I don't.
On the north side, we advanced two P B C pipes and that's what we sampled on.
I'm sorry?
On the north side, where we sample currently on the north, on One Twenty, yeah, we, we put.
You, you get a.
Physically put monitoring.
You actually drilled a well, but I'm, again, what we talked about before is personal wells are fine if you get a resident, and I think we had one resident volunteer.
Don't know.
I think I said that to you, but you can use personal wells if they comply, which they're deep enough. You can't use a, you can't use a thirty foot well, obviously, because it hasn't got, I don't think in the area are that shallow, but I mean.
Well, that's, I've gotta say.
It has to be deep enough to get to, you know.
Well, the wells that we sample from are, you know, sixty foot down, thirty, sixty foot down.
Some of the wells in Glacier Ridge are higher than twenty five.
No, sure, those are gonna be in a different object.
So I left it, the second sentence is vague and I left it like, identified offsite wells, and I guess onsite as well, including private, must be tested and results blah blah. So that was kind of a footnote as a reminder, that needs to be expanded, but this is the deal. We're gonna have them test certain well sites, they'll be on a map, if you wanna do the depth or whatever, we'll do that.
That's it, we following the county.
If it's ordinance, does that require, I don't know what the county ordinance. If it's ordinance, does that require, I don't know what the county ordinance.
It's quarterly sampling, two up gradient, two up gradient.
Two down gradient, yeah, that's a standard, standard testing.
Okay. So we seem to be okay.
I volunteer our well to be tested and then it'll gravel that goes around three sides of our property, so.
Thank you.
Oh, really?
She's, uh, just, you know, this is Bob, uh, Barb Shore, Shore, so the house, uh, the, the farm to the west, or no, to the west of the north pit. On the north side.
Oh. They're at the northeast corner of?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Right there.
What's your last name?
Shore.
It used to be Howe, the Howe property.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you have that old flag shaped lot?
Yes.
Right?
How many acres is that?
Twenty eight acres, twenty eight, a little over a feet, which was your trying to sell.
Here's an up gradient for you.
We already have, there's four wells up there. I guess the question is now, do you, do you take under the county's way of doing it? I, I think if, if we have, if groundwater's flowing this way, we probably have one here, one here, and one here, and one here. I would promote, we'd probably put one here and one here. And then the up gradients are up here, the down gradients here. We sample here right now. Those are the ones.
Do we know for a fact that the water flow is not missing the, the south pit? Do we know that for a fact? So if you take a test up there and.
I thought it would be important to have them right by the homes, just because.
The down gradient, right, but the up gradient's important because it's your, it's your blank, basically.
Well, then it could be these two. I'd have to find a location map, but we have four of them up there.
As, as long as it gets the water flow and you already have the hydrology.
Yep.
Yes, I'd like Troy's input on that, right?
Oh, yeah.
Troy?
As far as where it plays.
Can't see the map.
No, can't see the map.
Just, just the flow of the groundwater, Troy, you know?
What I was explaining, I'll back up a bit, was that we have, I believe, two up gradient wells up here, two down gradient wells here because of, this was annexed to the city many years ago. So I was promoting, if you wanted monitoring wells down by the homes down here, then you could use these for up gradient, these for down gradient.
Part of the question is to make sure that the up gradient wells are catching the right flow of groundwater, right?
That's the only real question there.
Oh, 'cause they could be terrified by wells.
Yeah, I, I could, I could tell you what's happening.
Come on.
Like a thunder trail is missing.
We can, we, he could, he could.
And I didn't mean to throw you on the spot.
Don't you wanna grab?
I didn't wanna throw you on the spot, Troy, but, but I think that as this goes on, I mean, that's, I think staff's input would be hurting into the.
Well, they need to agree, they.
We make sure.
So there's no testing going on right now on the south side?
On the south side, no, no.
So, so I think what you do is supply the information to Troy and then he can give whatever advice he wants from H R Green, whatever. But we just, you just gotta make sure it's not like the, you know, the flow is this way and the south pit's here.
You're not in the.
You're not actually crashing it. I mean, weird things happen underground, so, you know.
So it's not a concern that it's not being tested down south though?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm curious though, I'm, I'm not, I'm not in reclamation and security again. The letter of credit stuff that you're okay with as far as converting from bonds to letter of credit?
Yes, we talked about that at the last meeting.
So Vic, you raised a good question before the meeting, the northwest corner where the processing will be lingering for some time. Is that to be reclaimed someday?
Yes.
So theoretically then.
We would suggest a separate letter of credit.
And we gotta be small.
Footprint and as we reclaim the South South reserve area, that can be released, but then the processing plant would stay under a separate letter of credit.
Yeah, now, so that'll all be shown or phased on the reclamation plan, right?
Yes.
It's probably not shown now. I doubt that you have that last corner phased.
Were the processing plants?
As being the last linger. Cause, cause the north didn't exist at the time.
No, but the processing plant would have ultimately ended when, before there was a, a north side. There should have been a cell that would have said, we restored the plant once we're done. I mean, that's all under state permit, so it's all, has to get restored.
All right, so are we good down to route one twenty?
So actually, a letter of credit adjusts to the size of the area that is being used, that's separate.
Yeah, it would be separate. It would be reduced, it would be a larger letter of credit at the time.
For year one during the rep.
During the first year of the letter of credit, it should be its largest.
Uh-huh.
And then it should reduce as they reclaim.
Well, if you just do it all in one and then shrink it down, do a.
Yeah, to the remaining.
And the remaining is, is the processing area.
Yeah, we don't know quite how large it'll be, but you get the general idea. And there shouldn't be a primary crusher, there shouldn't be a secondary crusher, it should just be whatever that's called up there.
Whole road wash plant.
Would, would secondary remain?
For some period, no. That, well, there wouldn't be a primary crusher in the field on the north side.
No, there's a primary, the secondary crusher would, would remain for a given period of time during north?
I, I think I said, if the materials is fine as we think it is on the north side, that maybe we wouldn't do any crushing on the south side.
Okay.
There could be some, because even over by the wash plant, they have one crusher that I think takes down big round rocks.
Okay.
A little bit, but it would be pretty far.
So you would move that secondary, it stays there just in case you need it?
Exactly.
For the north side?
Yes, until we didn't. Now that Mike didn't, all right, I'll make that decision.
You know, that's a long-term place. Well, the reclamation plan, when you get to that stage, in theory on the plan, that's when you start considering a permanent enclosure to the southeast. Something, a barrier, not a, not an enclosure.
Oh, you're talking about this.
Some sort of wall. Yeah, on the reclaim, on the reclamation plan, that's when you would stay from a city standpoint. When it gets to this stage, we, we need some sort of a.
Have a good night, Mark.
Uh, wall. Because it'll be there for another, who else I'm here to, till the north side's done, that could be a long time. How do you all, the markets? And it's, that could be crushing and it could be just processing.
I would say the vast majority of it will be a wash plant making a wash.
Well, that's still making.
The crusher, the secondary crusher's gonna stay out there, whether, you know, and that's gonna be part of their.
Conveyor belts.
The secondary crusher has to move 'cause you're reclaiming that property.
But it's a primary one.
I don't know what you wanna call secondary, because. Primary crusher is in the field, that will be gone after twenty twenty four. There's a secondary crusher from this primary that does the crushing plant. I would say over time, that may go away too. I think there's a crusher over here, but it's probably gonna be sparingly used when we get to the north side because.
Has the secondary crusher been an issue in the past? I, this is like the first time hearing.
Well, we know where the noise is coming from.
I, it's, it's not a, it's not a noise question. I, if you're asking me, no, it's, it's, it's basically the land attached to as, as it go along with the letter of credit that continues because they're still using that portion of land. That's my point.
So it really does matter what equipment it is, it's whatsoever on that piece of land?
Yeah, and then how, how much equipment is out there in regards to the size of land they're, they're actually using? Because they might have equipment sitting out there that they're gonna have to sit out there. And we're gonna make sure that they're covering their bases on their land of credit with that equipment just sitting out there.
Will you be sending any of the water reclaimed material through a secondary crusher, or don't you know?
Water reclaimed material?
Stuff under the water.
The other one.
Uh, it's possible depending on, if there was. If, if there's something material in there that's worth crushing, I, I think over time, if, if we think what we think is on the north side is gonna be ninety-five percent pea gravel or sand, then there might not even be a market for what we can put on the ground because it won't be paying significant.
Rub one twenty? Uh, so we had an issue on, uh. I, I thought we were talking about sweeping the dry over resource.
How often do you do that, Kyle?
As needed. I mean, if we have a mobile sweeper, um, we probably have a service on top of that, so it depends on if it needs.
Sweep that whole entrance dry.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we used to have a truck mounted broom and I think that wasn't nearly as effective. So I think they went to a sweeping service, like a street sweeper, a mobile sweep.
It actually sucks.
Yeah, and we're back. But again, it's not, it's like, like something we wanna pay for when we don't need to do it.
Yeah, the problem with that though is saying, um, because as needed, as determined by who?
Well, she says it would be a judgment call on, on our part.
I know.
Like it normally is at all of our places.
Sure, and I, I understand that, but, um, what would you say would be the average? Can you guesstimate?
Three, three days a week, probably.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So it's not like.
Oh, no, we, here, our exits look like as far as traffic coming in and out. Um, and it, it, on a busy day, obviously, after a rain, you're gonna have a lot more trucks that are driving around the plant area where it's gravel and they'll start tracking stuff, so for sure then, yeah.
Okay.
So, and certainly on.
Just gonna be a minimum of two days a week?
Well, I, I just.
Yeah, he, he said three.
Two to three is what he said.
It's just an, it's as needed.
Right.
As needed, yeah.
We, we might go a whole week without.
But we know we've had complaints about that.
Right.
So apparently the as, as needed doesn't get it done. So I guess the question is, do we need a minimum there? I mean, I know a while back, I mean, we were talking about every day and that's what we.
So actually, this, this brings up another point. We just found out that there's no Illinois law that requires truckers to tarp their loads.
No.
So you're gonna, it sounds like you're gonna win that point where you took out tarping as a requirement. But tarping's really not the issue to us. It's, tarping's an issue to the drivers down the road, right?
Yeah.
Whatever happens in the load.
And we have signage. I mean, we have, we have tarp scans, well, we have signs when they pull away from the scale.
What causes the mess on the road is what? Is it the, the pan at the end of the truck? If it's not swat dogged.
Normally it'd be the, what we call track out, which is if it's been raining, the, the pit floor is probably a little bit softer than usual, so you'll get stuff under their wheel wells. And it's a long haul road. But if it's really extreme weather, then they might track something out, but it's a long haul road to track out on, and it's paved, so that's a good.
But even if it's dry, are they dropping material from the pan of their trucks?
That I.
If it's not swat dogged?
No, we do our best to tell people when to lose their spread pans.
Is it gonna vibrate?
Well, it's an uphill, so in theory, they lose some of it. There's only so much that could sit on a pan.
So what are we seeing on one twenty?
And not all of them have spread pans.
Rock.
Well, not even, not even necessarily.
Tiger, maybe?
At the entrance, it's down the road too.
I think his kind of, the last meeting was if you start writing a few tickets, that would go away.
It helps.
Yeah, but, but what, what Meyer wants to do here is avoid any responsibility for anything here. Signage is good, but, but if you, if you, if you require your customers, meaning you have to take responsibility to do this, then it gets done. If you don't require it, it doesn't get done.
And there's a lot of trucks that come in that we don't know are coming in without tarps and without this and without.
Well, I, I'm just, I'm talking about the inspection now, not the tarping. Um, but if you don't do anything, i.e. inspect.
Well, we have signage.
They know you're not doing that. Signs are signs, but nobody reads them, you know that.
We have signs for charts, we have signs for spread cans, we have signs for speed limits, we have signs for a lot of things.
I understand that, but if you got a guy telling the trucker when he's got his bills, you know what, you gotta clean that pan off, I just inspected it. You gotta, you gotta do it before you leave, then the, next time the guy won't try to get away with that. It's just like when, you know, if you go to any plant and, and, I don't know, I didn't, this is news to me about tarping laws, but, um, you know, if, if a, if a company requires their product to be tarped, regardless of the law, if they require their product to be tarped and then they don't require the trucker to tarp it before he leaves the site, it doesn't get done. And the product gets ruined in many cases. So you, it's, it's incumbent upon you, the supplier, to make sure that happens.
Only have. Tarping signs, because obviously the law is pretty great on that. We would encourage law enforcement to tell them to tarp every load. Unfortunately, a lot of our customers come in, don't have tarps on their trucks, so.
Okay, well, chief, what's the deal on tarping? Could you tell?
Okay, might just pass that out. That's probably the best response. The Illinois Vehicle Code does not mandate all loads must be covered all the times. And then there's certain elements of the offense, which is six twenty five I L C S, five fifteen one oh nine. First element of defense is that the load actually be, is actually being spilled. The second element of defense is that the load is prevented from spilling based on the way the vehicle's loaded or constructed. So the, the argument there is that it depends on how the vehicle's loaded is why it's gonna spill debris, not whether or not it's tarped or not.
So it's a pilot word?
Right, so if you see the way that they roll those tarps over on the canopies, if, if the truck's not loaded properly, it's still gonna spill debris. The tarp's not gonna stop that, so. That, and that's why, in order to enforce that, you can't just stop a truck because it doesn't have a tarp and it's gotta load. It's not, it's not legal. It won't hold up.
So the, so is there any, is there any science to loading a truck?
Uh, sure there is because of weight limits on axles. I mean, our orders have to, like in a, in a semi bed, they have to make sure that X amount of the load is on X amount of the axles of the truck.
They don't load them on the scale, right?
No, 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 but then when the trucks pull up on the scale, um, they, I, I've seen some that pull up, they'll put their front duals on there to see what they weigh, 'cause they're looking at the numbers. They'll get their gross weight and they'll pull off and look at what their tag on the back weights are.
And what if they're screwed up? Do they go?
They have to go back and dump.
Start over?
Yeah, well, not start over. Sometimes they can just shift the loading. If they think it's too front loaded, they'll lift the box up a little bit and take, take a spin around it to see how it loads.
So you, you agree with that, that if the truck's loaded improperly, it can lend itself to lose some of the stone?
No, I don't think there's really any product we have that actually flies out of the box.
Dust.
Dust.
Yeah, well, that's the point of the tarping, is the dust.
Dust.
So, I mean, so, so any of the rocks that go through somebody's windshield's coming off the pipe.
Yeah.
And the, how the rock got on the road probably isn't from the load, it's probably from the pan or the wheel well.
Or just got caught.
Yeah, the, the tire.
Or a tire.
Or on the ground, yeah, just got caught in the tread and it stayed for a while until it finally lets go.
I have seen stones actually fly out of the trucks in the past. So I mean, it, it can't happen. I'm not saying it is, but anything can happen, you know, I mean, I don't care.
Well, yeah, the question is, is there something we can put in here to minimize that's acceptable to them? What I put in here is the guy in the weigh station, who's the guy who sees the pan, can tell the truck driver, you need to clean the pan before you leave. Is that too much to ask?
I'd have to ask Mark first.
You already, you already told us months and months ago that that's what your guy does. You already told us that. I don't know why this is an issue now.
We have a signage that says, tarp below, it's clean with spread pans.
Let me finish. You said, we were there, that they inspect the pan, they look at it as the trucks, sometimes it's while the guy's moving, but they're looking at it. I think you have, do you have a mirror on the other side?
I don't know.
Do they communicate with the truck driver through a radio, or do they just yell through the window?
Two-way radios, CDs and stuff, at least.
To the truck driver?
And then they talk to him face to face at.
Okay, so is the guy leaving the, the weigh station?
That might have been Doug. I, I don't know if they.
I know that was, I know, that was mentioned, that someone does watch to make sure that they do it.
But then they need to call the driver and say, stop.
I think Doug was in that meeting. That's when we did the ride with the, where we found that drone. We did a ride along, right?
Right, what, what David wrote here is exactly what we were told is happening, so I don't understand why there's an issue with this.
Why can't the, why can't the guy in the tower?
I'm in the middle of this one, I can see it.
Wait, why, why can't the guy in the tower call the guy with the truck and say, you just drove off the scale and your pan's loaded, get out of the truck and clean it?
He's not in the tower, he's, he's at eye level with them. The question's bad too, is there a mirror or a device that when they pull up to get their ticket, that the guy in the ticket house can see the back of his truck and say, pull over and clean off your spread pan?
He drives right by him. How could he not see it?
Well, he doesn't know right by him. Well, he doesn't know, right by him. The tickets are off a little bit, but still, facts are, can he see something and communicate with it?
He can see the pan.
That we do something like.
The only thing you can't see if there's no mirror is the other side of the truck.
Yeah.
And I'm, and you know what, put a mirror up if that's the case.
Well, that's what I said, it's gotta be some way of at least warning them.
But the issue is that the guy, Meyer guys need to take responsibility. And that's what I see as not happening here. You know, in, in a truck driving, if you want them to tarp it, all you gotta do is tell them. You know what, you come on our site without a tarp on your truck, you're on hold.
We have signs, but there's only so many employees that are gonna be able to stand there and check them out.
You tell your customers, if you come on my site with your truck with no tarp, you don't get loaded.
Well, we can send letters out to our carriers, that we can do. Independent customers that come in.
You don't get loaded without a tarp. It's pretty simple. It's pretty simple. I used to do this, I mean, you don't come into the plant without a tarp, tarp for your truck.
Okay, a couple of things, um, the, David, going back to the number one under Route twenty, where, um, it says as needed. How about if we say as needed or at the request of the city?
Oh, sure.
Would you be comfortable with that? I think that solves our problem. David?
Yep.
Okay. Um, and then as far, I guess my concern is always, you know, what, what is that fine line between making sure that we're, um, requiring things that are pertinent versus above and beyond the scope of what is actually the responsibility of the business? I, the word responsible, the weigh station employee was, is responsible, I, I get a little concerned with that. However, because then I feel like the legal onus is on them if they, if a truck escapes.
That's what they wanted, they're, they're the ones who have control of the truck at that moment.
I know, I know, but is it, doesn't the trucker also have some responsibility?
We have no relationship with the trucker, how do we, we, we have a contract with these guys.
No.
We have nothing with the trucker.
No, I understand, but that, then that becomes the legal issue that I think Chief Burke was talking about, right? That.
Right, but they have a relationship with the customer, which is what Scott's talking about. He's saying, tell your customer that to use our, our site, they have to, they have to follow our instructions on cleaning the pan. And I don't know about tarping, but if we ever, if, if we, if they agree, then you tell your customer to come in here with a tarp and you tarp it.
But, but, just hypothetically here, okay? Isn't that somewhat ambiguous to determine because he checks it when he weighs in and by the time he gets out, he's picked up stuff and it's dispersed?
Well, yeah, but you've done, you've made some effort to.
Okay, but, but, so that's where, and that's where I'm saying that responsibility, I don't think the word should be responsible. I think, um, is, you know, it, it, it's once the truck gets out onto our roadways and if they're spilling whatever, whether it be dust or gravel or whatever, um, that becomes a legal matter. They're not being fined, it's the truck owner, right? So ultimately the truck owner or truck operator, whatever, well, it could be both, yeah, in some circumstances.
Because we would go back and say, your weigh station guy isn't doing his job. And you're in violation because we said it was his responsibility to inspect, and it's not.
It gets a pretty big onus, I don't know.
It is, we can make an effort, but it's like buying lumber at Home Depot and then.
Yeah, just tell us the difficulty of a guy.
Flags on the back of the lumber sticking on the guy's pickup truck, I think that's the driver's responsibility.
Oh, come on, that guy in Menards does that all the time. That's what he sits there doing. He, he hands out the red, the things to nail in the rear.
That doesn't mean he puts them on it though. Like I said, we can say, hey, we can see in the mirror that you have material on the back of your truck, please clean it off. I don't know if they're gonna do it.
I mean, I think Alden McCondon has a point, just with respect to the responsibility.
He's sitting there doing nothing anyway.
Chief?
I just want to add that, you know, we, we, we take very minimal complaints about gravel falling from trucks as far as, hey, hit my car, cracked my windshield. And I don't have the numbers in front of me, but if it was one a year, that would be high, out of twenty-eight thousand calls for service. We do see when the gravel comes off, and this is coming from Officer Fisher, who obviously works for us, he's also the president of the Illinois Truck Association. So we, we send him all over the state to teach on these topics. So he's the one gave that flyer. The back plate, when that's not cleaned off, that's what you're seeing that's gonna pop off the road. You know, I'm not saying that it's impossible for something to come out on the top if there's, it's not covered, but it's very, 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 very unlikely if it's loaded properly. Which means where, where's the high point of the load, the low point of the load is it removes the trailer and the wind and everything else. And most of the drivers don't want that ticket. So they're gonna pay attention to the way their load is, because if they are dumping stuff on the road, then they can get that ticket. And you can obviously see by our stats that we do enforce all the truck laws, cause we collect a lot of fines every year because of it. And that's from one guy pretty much doing that, so. So I, I, I think that if you're gonna try to ask them to do something, that cleaning off that back plate and making sure that they're not dragging, dragging stuff out, that would be more important than maybe the cover.
It's so simple to me, I don't know why you're not agreeing to that.
Because it's what you said, it's, it's the, what happens if something happens and, and you put the responsibility on Meyer and he did what he said he would do. He, he looked at it and didn't see anything.
Oh, I.
But all of a sudden you're telling them, our plant's gonna be shut down because you didn't do your job.
I gotta prove it, Mark. How am I gonna prove it?
So, so let's make the words better than, than, you know, you're gonna use your best efforts.
Oh, yeah, you know what, that, that's not better, that's, that's more ambiguous, that's what that is.
How about we say you're responsible? All, all this, we're confusing two things. One is what we want my, Meyer to do and what they should do with their customer trucks. The second is a legal thing out on a highway, which, the, the legal, the trucker's the one responsible for his load. So legally, when you're talking about a legal issue, I think you're the lawyer, but you get out on a highway and I've had people, again, my past experience, try to come back on a plant for something to happen on a highway, the trucker's the one that's ultimately responsible for that legal issue, that damage or whatever it is that happened out on the highway. And what we're talking about is what we want some due diligence here by Meyer to do. And I don't, I agree with you, David, I don't understand why they're, considering their plant manager is the one that said that, that his guy does this. We stood right there in the shack, he told us what he did, he pointed at the truck. I don't understand.
He can do that, but he can't get out of the scale and stop a truck that's halfway up the hill who doesn't.
What you're looking at?
He's right here.
And if he raises him and the guy keeps going, he makes a note on his paperwork and says, this guy went out here and.
And that he might be able to do.
Well, he's responsible.
Twenty other trucks coming up to the scale.
Didn't say he's responsible, follow him out on a highway, he's responsible to inspect. That's all you're talking about, it's part of his job, he's already doing it, I don't know why we're having a problem with this.
Okay, but maybe there's a, maybe where I'm stuck is there's a difference between inspecting and buy.
Yeah.
Responsible to inspect.
Yeah.
Do we agree that no tarping? Do we agree that?
I don't think you can require that.
You can't require that, and there's a lot of trucks that don't even have tarps.
You're shutting yourself off the whole segment of work it.
I just don't think that's something that's. And if the calls, I mean, if it's one, one a year or even five a year, I don't think it's.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we figure out how many times it's gonna be cleaned?
Uh, two or three.
Okay, cool.
I thought we said it, as needed or as.
I got, I got that.
Yeah.
But for clarity, we are going to require them to do the inspection on the way out, correct?
I get a nod.
Requiring you, where that doesn't mean we're holding them to, you know, any fines or anything else, it's just, it's required. The only way you could get fined would be is if, if we found out, and again, like David said, it's gotta prove it, that he isn't checking.
During executive session, can you contact Doug and see what the procedure is? Cause I know that was mentioned.
I haven't been a weigh master in thirty years.
Right, so if you can type, contact him, maybe after.
In front of him as far as cameras, mirrors, etc.
I mean, if it's, if it's your consensus to have that language in there, then that's your consensus. You, you know what our position is on it, but it.
I just wanna know what the procedure is now, I mean, we, we've heard what the procedure was, but is that really what's happening?
So you might verify that.
The burms, you mark is okay, that just simply means the burms will be reflected on the plans that you're going towards us. Annual reporting, I, I didn't, um, I think this is all saying the same thing.
Well, he struck the, uh.
He's thinking about the.
Carry mind up previous year and future four, he struck all the four-year things.
Right.
I had a question, why, why not, are, don't you have a plan? I mean, you know.
Well, there's a plan, but then things can change. I bet it would be more important on an annualized basis to talk about what was done and where we are going.
No, no, I get that.
I mean, we can talk about the other three years or two years or whatever is left in that sequence.
It's a look ahead and every year it changes, but it's a look ahead, so I, again, I don't see the issue. You're gonna have that plan in front of you and then this year, here's what happened and, oh, well, we didn't get there or we got further than that. And so now my, my three or four years in the future.
Looks a little different.
A little bit different, so I guess I just didn't see the issue.
Well, it always said four years and I'm like, well, we're gonna talk about what we, what we did and how far in the future do you wanna look?
It's just a status.
We'll be back in a year.
It's just a status update, every year it's a status and looks at the future years. Kinda like doing a five-year C I P, right? We know the fifth year, well, we know the fifth year is not all that good, but we do it because we're looking ahead.
Cause you're looking ahead.
So what are we doing?
Well, I think we're saying the same thing.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, I think he replaced the three bullet points that he deleted with the third bullet point he added.
Which is what we really need, I think.
The question is, do you want more than twelve months, I think?
I don't think it's necessary.
Cause we'd be back twelve months.
Right, right, I just think twelve months.
I mean, yeah, I think you're saying the twelve-month reporting cares, we're gonna be coming back every year, but it's, it's naturally gonna take into account what the future looks for me, but why put a.
Why put all that in there when we just do that twelve months?
Correct. Terms of the agreement, um, we talked about.
Fees.
See, are you, uh. As long as it totals, I don't know what.
This total one point six, and then this one.
Oh, he's checking now.
Yeah, the only thing that didn't carry over in his table is the last seventy-five thousand dollar payment. It's in his bullet points up on top, but the table he added didn't have the last payment in twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six.
But it does total one point six.
Yes. Does everyone agree with this?
When he goes, words in the paragraph in the perens includes twenty-five thousand dollars in addition of.
I think he was just letting you know that when we had offered the additional fifty thousand towards the consulting agreement portion, he's taking twenty-five and putting it into the twenty nineteen payment, doing the twenty-five and putting it in the twenty.
Do you care about that, do I care about that, does anybody care about that? It's all money. As long as we say that the consultants.
He cared about it.
As long as if we say that the consultants are paid for in this, except for me, I'm the only one out, right? Those.
I think he just wanted to make sure that you knew where the adjustment is.
So, so the effect here just was to move about fifty thousand dollars to a couple of, out here, further, further out. I mean, that's effectively, but.
Technically further out, we had, we had agreed to three hundred and then several years of a hundred and seventy-five. And then we came back with a fifty thousand dollar payment that I think he offered in twenty twenty, so instead we'll take.
But instead of three seventy-five in the beginning, it's down to three hundred and then that, that was pushed out essentially.
Well, we never offered three seventy-five.
No, I, I did that, yeah, nobody's giving me direction, I guess.
He just threw the three seventy-five up front.
Thank you.
The seventy-five is in two, two thousand twenty-six.
Yes, you have, yeah, that's not in the table, there's seventy-five thousand.
So really there's one more row at the bottom.
There's one more row that he didn't carry over, correct.
Yeah.
So this is where I need a, a head nod.
On the money?
And it all totaled one point.
One point six.
Okay.
Does everyone?
With the additional seventy-five.
Does everyone agree with the one point six? Right?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, so that brings us down to penalties, which I didn't really, uh, you know, I didn't spend as much time on this or complaints. I don't know what we're talking about forty thousand a month, I don't know where that came from. You say that, somebody told me carries it a hundred thousand, I didn't write carries, somebody, is there a reason we can't just retype what's in carries agreement?
He felt that was pretty stiff and, and again, that was part of a construction deliverable project that was being gifted. This is a situation where this is our own land, we're restoring it per State of Illinois and City of McHenry regulations. And obviously we have the incentive enough to get done. And he thought cutting it down to forty thousand dollars over, if we were twelve months late, that's four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That's a pretty significant bump.
Late, late in what?
Meaning if we were late in our deadline, our twenty twenty-six deadline.
That's, that's not, uh.
So the reclamation underwater.
So you're specifying one particular penalty for one particular violation. Okay, I'm talking about violating anything in here we need to do.
I think he was specifically, shall only apply if reclamation is not completed after twelve thirty-one twenty-six.
Right, but what happens if you trip over and there's some dust on the road?
I think he had, did he, in the previous correspondence, was talking about five hundred dollar citations?
Yeah, whatever, we have to work, we have to have something.
Those were.
Yeah, there was a five hundred dollars.
Those are five hundred dollar citations for things that were operational type things, not the overall goal.
So we just have to, we have to.
You gotta do more than five hundred.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not comfortable with that, I don't think it's significant enough.
I agree.
The five hundred dollars?
Yes, and I also don't think that forty thousand a month is enough.
Park a cruiser at the gate, I forget that point.
You don't think that that's incentive for us?
Did he come up with forty thousand, just an arbitrary number?
Dave, I'm sorry, I, I, I got this draft that.
We need to massage this.
Yeah.
The only reason I say that, that, you know, it's, certainly it is a significant amount of money, but I feel, my, this is just my opinion. You know, I feel like we've tried to work with you with the money, cause ultimately it's not about the money, it's about getting this done and getting it done properly, right? But we want it done, so, so the, the reclamation, that part, the forty thousand per month, yeah, I think it needs to be stiff, stiffer because we want it done, period, so that's your motivation to make sure that everything's in compliance.
You're also gonna have a letter of credit on top of it.
I understand, but, um, and then as far as fines, um, yeah, I just, I don't know, five hundred, I think you could absorb them. And I, I don't want you to absorb them. I don't want you to absorb them, I want you to follow it, which I know that's your intention, I know, I believe that, but I would like it backed up with some financial security.
Well, and I agree with that, I think it's gotta be higher, but I also think it has to be twofold. In other words, what we're talking about here is reclamation complete. I mean, the reality is, yeah, there would be penalties, because at that point, nobody's gonna stop you from reclaiming. I mean, you're at the end point, so you gotta get it done. But I think probably even more important is that the dry bank mining, if it's not completed by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, these fines, and they're, this, whatever this number ends up being, it's forty, what they put in is forty, I think it needs to be higher. But that needs to apply to the, the dry bank mining first, because if they don't get that done.
True.
Then they don't, then they don't get the pond dug fully and then they don't get the reclamation done. the reclamation done. So.
So both days.
Yeah, I agree, I think the twenty-twenty-four date is more important even than the other.
I think the both are, but yeah, I agree, not ways more.
Okay, well, that's the time to pick a number. I'm sure that's what he did, he picked a number.
And he completely took out suspension, so we're not talking about any closed business days and things like that, which we.
I don't have suspension removed.
That's still in there.
Oh, it is? Oh, okay. Oh, I see it.
Now, that all has to be worded, I don't know what that means or when and why.
That's not right.
We have to work through that. Be noticeable. Opportunity to fix it.
Cause when we were looking at that, to clarify, those were penalties for everything, not just reclamation.
Right, I, I wasn't even talking about completing on that. I was on the opposite end of the spectrum.
Okay.
Minor violations. He went right to the major, which is a good thing to do. Well, okay, Kerry's at a hundred thousand, right? Yeah. Is there a cap? Or is it just going? And are you at that point, Kerry? Did you finish? Are you out? We're done, well, we haven't deeded the property over, but we're off the property. And have all the letters of credit been released and all that? Not yet, because we haven't deeded the property. And actually, there is one that'll carry over beyond it, and that's a water quality. And were there ever any penalties ever imposed? Uh, well, yeah, because we didn't make the deadline in twenty sixteen, and we needed more time. So we negotiated a extra year to put the dredge in. How much money did you pay to give the year? Wow. Do you care about? What held you to it? No, I, it's, because it was less than a, like a year's worth of penalties, it was somewhere around five hundred thousand dollars. It was a negotiated payment that we added to our payments, and then they gave us that additional time to mine. But you had a, an element in the agreement that you could apply to negotiate. There was something, there was a hammer in there of X dollars a day or a month.
Yeah, it was, it was.
Well, it was a monthly. It was a hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, it was a hundred thousand dollars a month.
That's probably why at the end of your term agreement, Kerry had had a four hundred and a five hundred thousand probably at the end of that term agreement. Went off.
That was one of them.
Well, there was, there was one additional penalty in the, in the revised agreement, that if we mined past the deadline that we had agreed to the second time. That there was immediate big fine, which we didn't. Well, I suppose the, the obvious thing the city should do is retype what's in Kerry, and then you gotta work on down that from that somehow. We need to get some language in here, so we oughta not do more brain damage coming over their own language, we oughta just use Kerry's, and then you can fill in the blank, but that's obviously where we gotta start with. Cause it's the same violation, it's, you're discussing the exact same phrase and, and paragraph in provision of an agreement.
So.
Yeah. You're promised to get out my sort of. Construction project with a deliverable date. Cause remember, this is what the people want. They wanna know this date's gonna be there. And if it's tripped over, they're gonna be all over it.
And the consequences.
Hold their feet to the floor.
I, I just, I do like the idea of a larger chunk that first month, you know, that, that if it's not completed.
For two thousand twenty-four?
Yes.
I'll go back and look at, I mean, yeah, I think the original thing we put together, David, I took the language out of Kerry's for the fine.
Oh, when you put that table.
Right, so it's, we have it already.
Good. All right, we'll work on that. Anything else on penalties?
Well, as it relates to complaint penalties, right, or violations of operation penalties, right, so, so we should maybe have, have those in two separate sections, however we define it, one for the, for the, for this, you know, the term, and one for the day-to-day violations.
Well, you'll be violating a section of the agreement. If you violate section H and I, then this is the penalty, and anything else is such.
We wanna make sure that those are sufficient enough also.
That's including the hours, the noise, the dust, all, any of those operational violations?
There's a lot of stuff in there, I mean, Ross would know better than I, and I kinda put him on the spot, but, you know, multiple, multiple violations of a section, you know, so how many times?
You get three strikes.
Three times a week, or is it three times in a year? I mean, if it, if it's escalating, uh.
Aggravating, yeah.
Yeah, if it's escalating, then what's the, is there a sunset on it? You know, if it's, I'm just using numbers, I'm not saying these are it. If it's ten dollars the first time.
Right.
Twenty the second.
Yeah.
Thirty the third, does it matter if it's in a week or within the entire term of the contract, you know, entire term of the agreement? So that's something we gotta come up with for that section. All right.
Complaints. Then we have complaints, you know, these are comments that were made in the past. I tried to incorporate some along. I, I, I did go back and pull all of the memos between us, the city council and myself and each other and all, so, like, we last since February or so. So I'm gonna run through those again to make sure I caught everything, but bottom line is we need a better complaint procedure.
I don't like them going right to Ross, to be honest with you.
Like, like, have you received complaints in the last? Just got one in the last three days, four days before I was at town. Have you received any? Cause we have a lady off of, you know, that's been. No, the only ones I got, Ross, you gave me the woman that lives down the hill in Glacier that had a noise complaint, and that was at five AM, which we decided was current.
Right.
And then I had a gentleman who lives in Burning Tree, who complained once about dust because we were stripping when the winds were blowing out of the north for three days in a row. And he was right. Well, that, that's, the point is that when you receive complaints, there should be a process to send them to us. Right. And a resolution, and vice versa, and then we receive it, we send it to you, and.
And it should be closed somehow, too, not just left open.
It should be closed. You can give your explanation that it's from wherever. Well, like I said, yeah. And then we need to resolve it. I don't know how we're gonna do that, send it to adjudication or whatever, it's the easiest thing to do, is set up a separate process. But the people need to be heard, and we understand if it gets, you know, abused, we'll deal with that, but, um, there has to be a process, it seems.
Can I just step in on that real quick? Because part of the biggest problem that we have, when we do receive a complaint, is we will send someone out right away, but it might have been a dozer rolling across a berm, and they're gone by the time we get there. So there's no verification of a complaint, or the complaint may have been unfounded because that dozer wasn't actually working there, and there was no noise, it was just driving down the berm to go wherever. So, you know, part of this is these people call and they complain, and they say, well, we consistently complain, but by the time we get out there, there's nothing there. So we're, we're just taking their word, but I can't write a violation, you know, without verifying that there's an actual violation.
Yeah, we're not, this isn't a violation paragraph, this is how to.
Handle complaints.
Yeah, what are we doing?
Right, okay, so that, I'm just saying, that's part of the problem that we have, I mean.
Do you talk to the lady before you drive out there?
Yes.
And say, well, is the thing still there, or is it gone?
Well, a lot of them, I mean, most of them are noise complaints early in the morning.
A lot are just voice messages.
Voice messages or emails that come in, that, you know, this morning, when I got up, I heard this, you know, so it's, it's, they're complaints, but they're.
Well, in that example of like the dozer going across, that's a legitimate operation, that's not a violation of anything.
And it's not, no.
So you explain that to them?
We, we do explain that, yes. That those are normal operating, they're, it's within their timeframes and.
So do we care if that complaint gets to him?
Well, I think we should.
How would you prefer it?
I think we should relay that information, just to say, hey, they hear that they're the concerns of residents.
So we should have a running complaint piece of paper that should be attached to this on a form, and saying, here's what we're gonna exchange, you fill it out, we fill it out.
And I think we do actually have a pretty decent job of that right now. I mean, I've got, right here, I've got, there's, since April, there's been nineteen different complaints. Now, half of those, over half of those are from the asphalt plants, so actually, probably three quarters of those are from the asphalt.
That's a lot, we haven't had nineteen in the last ten years. Yeah, that's recorded.
Little heightened scrutiny right now.
Right, and that's what it, because a lot of them are from the same individual.
You receive?
I mean, the person.
Those go to him.
Yeah, there's an email.
I'll respond to the person, but I, I was forwarded on to Ross.
So those complaints are filed.
It isn't for I do, but.
I mean, six of the nineteen are from the same, the same residents, so.
But in this situation, something like that should be marked closed, so that it doesn't accumulate against us.
Right.
Well, I mean, we'd have to keep a running number, yeah, it's closed, but it was, there was a complaint, now it's closed. So.
Well, then I should, should say, there's a violation if there was a violation.
Right, if there is a violation, we will follow up on it. But if there's no violation found, then it's automatically closed.
Yeah, that would suggest no violation.
It's unbounded.
Or you couldn't determine, it's not that.
Or we couldn't.
Not if there's no violation.
Well, right, there, there, we could not determine, there was no violation found when
Okay, that was Tom Thunder. Making noise. That's all I have. I mean, this'll take, this'll take time to develop the complaint, I think, you know, put some language in here and start with that session. Yeah. Maybe I guess at some point. Yeah, so do you have anything else?
What's that?
Do you have anything else? We're gonna go in a closed session, everybody.
No, well, the question is, you know, are we getting the second amended tolling agreement extended just to cover everything and be done? Do we need to? Do you need to go in a closed session before we do that?
Yeah, the second, if, if we make a motion to sign the second amendment, then that would be a suggestion they want us to go forward and try and finish this off within the timeframe before that. It's a direction to finish this off.
Are we close enough with the consensus to do that in open session now and get it done?
Seems like it.
I don't know, we need to push, let's just go in the executive session, let's talk about it, let's.
Back on, back on any group. Yeah, and what's the next meeting that you?
Two council meetings?
Ten to the twenty-fourth.
Oh, ten to the twenty-fourth, okay, okay. You can leave your stuff there if you want them, I'll take it. We gotta look through it quickly.
I've taken my stuff.
So how?
Let me outside wait for the vehicle to come.
You said it.
With me and nine hundred thousand other people.
B T, I'm here.
I'll call you then. Yeah.
Motion to go in executive session.
She's putting the hammer down on him.
Uh, oh, need a second, sorry, I didn't know what's going on. Alderman Tandon, please call it off.
Alderman Tandon, yes. Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman Havick.
Yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman Schaper.
Yes.
Alderman Glan.
Yes.
Alderman Santi.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, roll call.
Alderman Tandon, here. Alderman Devine.
Here.
Alderman Havick.
Here.
Alderman Curry.
Here.
Alderman Schaper.
Here.
Alderman Glan.
Here.
Alderman Santi.
Here.
There, Joe.
Here.
All right. It does, it does look as though, coming out of a closed session, we do have a motion to make, it does look like there's a consensus to move the matter forward and to write up an amended, an amendment to the annexation agreement and an amendment to the conditional use, along the lines of what we talked about tonight. We both understand that's just an outline in the material terms, right? We still need to do the detail of all issues. I don't, I don't want anybody to start, you know, we're not gonna change a million six,